I only get to do this once a year. I'm thinking maybe I should get a picture for our blog. I'd like to call the first meeting of the new year and our organizational meeting to order. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Chase? Here. Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan?
I'm here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Dr. Benson, you have a form.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
How come I'm not on? Hello?
At this time, I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
One minute. I would like to ask if we could move item number 10.02, which is the approval of a Stafford County utility easement across Norah Stafford property from action to consent, and also suggest that we move 7.01 and 7.02, which is board member committee reports and board member comments, to our next school board meeting on the 23rd of February in the interest of the economy of time. Oh, I'm sorry, January.
Second.
Time flies. If there's any discussion, we have inclement weather that's predicted for, you know, not too far from now, and that would give us all a chance to, you know, have our comments and take our time with them.
As long as it's okay with the new board members being that it's your first, I would agree.
I'm okay with it.
So is that all right with the...
At this time, I entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
She seconded it?
She accepted.
Okay. And all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask for nominations for chairman of the school board.
Dr. Benson, I have a nomination for chairman. I'd like to nominate Trish Healy for chairman of the school board.
Second?
Ms. Healy has been nominated as chairman. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Nominations for chairman are now closed. Those in favor of Ms. Healy as chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. I congratulate Ms. Healy for being appointed school board as chairman.
So the next order of business is, do we have a nomination for the vice chairman?
Yes. Madam Chair, I nominate...
I'm sorry. McCosker?
I nominate Jamie Decatur.
Okay. We have two nominations. No, no second is required, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Any other nominations? No, hearing none. I think Mr. McCosker's name was out there first. So all in favor of Mr. McCosker for vice chairman, say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
All right. That's four three, right? Motion passes by a vote of four to three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And next, we need to appoint our school board clerk. Do we have a nomination?
Yes.
You need a nomination or a motion?
I don't know. We usually have a motion.
I would like to ask that we accept Missy Hall as the clerk of the school board.
Second.
Okay. We don't have a recommendation for a deputy clerk yet at this point, but we can be open to that in future. Okay. All in favor of the appointment of our current clerk to continue, please say aye.
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 All opposed? No. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Now, Madam Clerk, if you could help me, my screen just went blank.
Mine did the same thing.
I don't know why.
Did you hit it here?
Next will be the V S B A code of conduct, just in...
No, we have the school board meeting dates.
Oh, that's right.
I have a written cheat sheet, so...
Very good.
Those know me, know I like things on paper. Do we have a motion to approve the 2018 school board meeting dates, times, and special activities?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve and second. Any discussion? All in favor of 4.02, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 4.03, approve the Virginia School Board Association's Code of Conduct. I'm sure everybody's reviewed this.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve from Ms. Egan. Any second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Young. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Adopt the administrative authorizations for 2018. Are there any questions? Or say, assist for a motion first.
Motion to approve the administrative authorizations for 2018.
Motion for Ms. Hazard, second for Ms. Decatur. Any questions about these? They're fairly standard? No? All in favor of adopting the administrative authorization for 2018 as dated in 4.04? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Now, we have appoint school board member liaisons to 2017, 2018 advisory committees. We have some positions to fill because of new appointments to the board. The first committee that we need an appointee for is the Career and Technical Education Advisory Committee. Mr. Conley was on there as the primary, and Mr. Hironz was his alternate, so we have two slots open. Any volunteers?
I would be interested in serving on the CTE committee.
Would you like to be the primary?
I would.
Okay. Dr. Chase is interested in that? Do we have anyone interested in being the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
Ms. Young? All right. We have volunteers.
If I could just say, that's a great committee. That was one... I was on it before Chris, so you will both enjoy that committee.
All right. Let's go down here, and we can... I don't think these need to be approved, or is anyone... All right. With that, we'll just move forward. It's the three-on-three and...
Technology.
The technology, right. But I mean, in terms of board approval of a vote. The Technology Advisory Committee, we also need a primary and an alternate. If we have two more volunteers, they don't have...
I'll be the primary on the TAC. I was on that before, so...
And I can be the alternate.
Oh, my gosh. We love our new members.
Great.
Thank you for volunteering. All right. Missy, did you get that? All right. So we filled those positions quickly. Now, we have the...
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
We had some discussion about the Capitol Improvement Planning Advisory Committee in light of our joint CIP, of whether that was a necessary committee. It does not maybe have to be decided tonight, but I know that there was some discussion that right now there aren't even enough members for that committee, and I'm not trying to add to our workload, but I don't know if there is a sense, and I guess I would ask Dr. Benson and, I guess, Mr. Haran of whether that is one we should continue, because I will tell you, as you all will find, there's lots of committees. I don't want us... But I would ask...
We're not filling that.
No. Well, I'm... I'm just saying whether it needs to be continued.
I'm on it right now, but there was some discussion between Mr. Haran and myself. We were having some trouble filling, getting a meeting together. People signed up for it, but they couldn't get it together to actually sit down and have a meeting, so have you been able to get ahold of anybody? I mean, I know we just had the holidays and all. Do you want to give it a little more time?
No.
And we can look at that when we do have our retreat, and we talk about, you know, what we want to do as a school board. I think looking at all the committees together might be a good time to look at it.
Yeah.
It's not... You know, tonight's probably not a good time, because maybe we can drum up some participation.
Well, I think what Holly was talking about was with the joint CIP, you know, the recommendations made by the CIP advisory committee were typically, you know, these are the, as parents, as members of the community, these are the projects that we see as important to us, for you people to consider when you're adopting the CIP advisor, or the CIP. We don't have that option anymore, really, because we have the joint CIP that gets presented, that gets, you know, meshed out with the board supervisors and the committee and whatnot. So I would hate to invite parents in here to make recommendations that nobody's ever going to take into consideration, because it's being developed by a committee and not our advisory committee. So they might be able to look at other things, things like, you know, if we are going to do, build a high school number six, what should high school number six have in it? Which is kind of like what we did with the ed specs for the elementary school. So those were conversations that we had, and those are the things that they could attack, but it would be a different CIP advisory committee, as we've seen in the past. So thanks for bringing it up.
It was just a suggestion, like you said, maybe the retreat, but it just was a time to see it as we move forward.
Ms. Egan, would you be willing to work with Mr. Haran and perhaps come up with some, you know, different...
Sure. Yeah.
...goals for that committee?
Yeah.
And then we can focus on maybe filling it up next year and, you know...
Sure.
It's just so much that the community has to offer.
Yes.
It can be a good opportunity, but along the avenues you're suggesting there as well.
Right.
All right. So that brings us to the... Where's these? I'm looking here. Three.
Standing committees.
Yeah, we have them. I think of them all together, so... We have our standing committees. Now, these are ones with us as board members. We have a opening on the Finance Committee for Mr. Hironz's seat, an opening on the Legislative Committee, which Mr. Conley was on, the Joint Schools Working Committee, Mr. Conley, and I would propose that, as a chairman, that I not be on either of those two committees, because we've got six positions, and that would give, you know, each of our board members an opportunity to be on either the Joint School Working Committee, which we refer to often as a three-on-three, or the Finance and Budget Committee. So do we have a volunteer for the Finance and Budget Committee? Ms. Young? You'd like to be on the Finance and Budget Committee? The Legislative Committee? The Legislative Committee would be like an extra, because, you know, you're either on the Finance and Budget or the Joint Schools, but you get a bonus chance to be on the Legislative.
I can take that on.
Okay. And then the Joint School Working Committee. We have two spots. Dr. Chase?
I would also, and what I'd like to do is, I'm going to volunteer to take one of the spots on the three-on-three, and I'd like to switch. If someone wouldn't mind taking my spot on the Finance and Budget, you know, I'd be interested in doing that. But I have a committee assigned.
Well, no, you would either be on one or the other. We certainly would have you, Ms. Hazard.
I could just sit back.
No.
So I'll take three-on-three.
Welcome back, Jamie. Nice to have you back. And Ms. Chase, thank you.
Well, I mean, it was in December, or since I left it, so I figured I needed to come back.
Well, that... All right. So Finance and Budget will be Ms. Hazard, Ms. Young, and Mr. McCosker.
Okay.
Then Legislative will be Dr. Chase, Ms. Egan, Ms. Hazard. Governance will continue to be Ms. Decatur, Ms. Egan, and Ms. Hazard. Joint Schools Working Committee will be Dr. Chase, Ms. Egan, and... Who? Ms. Haz...
Ms. Hazard.
No. Ms. Decatur.
No, it's Decatur, sorry.
You're going to the Joint Schools.
Yes.
Okay. Perfect. Perfect. And then the Student Discipline Committee, we all have the opportunity to participate.
My pleasure.
And our newest members will be actually sitting in a couple times before you're tasked with, you know, it, but there'll be one coming up very shortly in January, but you're both welcome to sit in, you know, on, you know, the meetings, and then after that, you will have mandatory attendance.
Can we all get a new calendar for the Discipline Committee for the rest of the year?
Yes, I think that would be helpful. And we do go in alphabetical order, so if you, you know, I don't know...
Do calendars...
I think that's the way we work.
Yes.
Mr. Nelson has that. And once in a while, you get lucky, and there's no discipline cases, so then we just send a thank you to Mr. Nelson. Mr. Nelson, could you stand up so everyone knows who you are? I'm not sure our new members have met you.
We did.
Oh, you met him? Okay. All right. Thank you. He's been here a long time. All right. So on the non-school board committees, councils, and commissions, we have one open position, and that's the County Parks and Recreation Commission, which Mr. Conley was on that. I think, Ms. Hazard, you were in that on the...
So I would like to, so I would like to just, if I may, Madam Chair, so I would like to give up my governor's school seat to Ms. Chase.
Dr. Chase.
Dr. Chase, yes. And then I would like to get on the County Parks and Recreation.
And I would like to step down as the alternate.
Okay. Do we have a volunteer for alternate on Parks and Rec? Or you're Commonwealth governors, which one?
Both.
Both. Do we have a volunteer for alternate on the Commonwealth Governor's School and the County Parks and Recreation Commission?
I'll be the alternate, and that's exactly what it's going to be.
For which one? Parks and Rec?
Parks and Rec.
Okay. Do we have a volunteer for alternate on the Governor's School?
I don't...
Well, if we don't have one, you just have to be healthy all the time.
I could be the alternate. I can switch to alternate.
Okay. All right. Thank you. How about private day school? Ms. Egan, do you want to stay there?
I would like to stay on that. And just a point of clarification, when this, and I know we just had this conversation not too long ago, this is a two-person committee. There's two people from the school board and two people from the board of supervisors that sit on it. And so we need...
What are you talking about?
So it's Jamie and I.
So which has been fine, because I've been attending every meeting instead of being an alternate, and I'm fine to continue doing that, but we should probably just clarify anything.
Right.
Okay. So we have two members on that?
Right.
Okay. All right. And then the Stafford Education Foundation, I think by default, the chairman is the representative on that, so I'll volunteer. The Head Start Policy Council, Ms. Hazard, you're, I'm sure you want to continue with that through the period.
I would like to.
And I believe, just, you know, to make, mark on your calendar, there has been a date set in March for a dinner at the Head Start, and it's really fun. We serve dinner with the supervisors to the parents of the Head Start students and the Head Start students as well, and it's, oh, my gosh, it's great. And Ms. Hazard, last year, how does have bring ice cream, because I remember I brought my sprinkles, and they were so excited about the ice cream and the food, and it's really great. And then after we serve the dinner, then they go into little groups, and they have little learning sessions.
If I could just make, so I won't be making my comments about things, I just want to say that now that they've gone to two nights a month where they do these at Head Start, they're having over like 200 family members, like with parents and kids coming. So we're going to be scooping a lot more ice cream, so make sure we all bring our scoops this time. And it's a great opportunity for us to get down there, and if you haven't seen the work that Ms. Massey and all of them do, I know, it's great, so.
Right.
But a lot of kids are coming now.
It's really fun, so try to block your calendar out on that date. Missy, you can let us know. I know it's in March. I put it on my calendar. March 12th. March 12th. So it'll be a great night, and that's down at Head Start. All right. Well, we got through all those appointments. Good job.
Do we need a motion on the...
I think on the ones for the standing committees, at least the Finance and Budget and the Joint Schools, we do need an approval by the school board, so we can just do a blanket, you know, we have a motion to blanket approve all these, and if we don't need approval, then, you know, we got it. Yes, the slate. We have a motion?
Motion to approve the slate of committee assignments.
Okay. Motion from Ms. Egan. We have a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who's second. We'll leave that up to the clerk.
Ms. Hazard's first.
Okay. Ms. Hazard seconded that, and Ms. Young thirded, and I think Ms. Decatur was in there as well. All right. So all in favor of these appointments as discussed, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Appointments pass. All right. So we can move on. We have a status report on 2017, 2018 school year calendar, and I believe that was to be about two minutes.
Madam Chair, I can expedite that explanation if it's a pleasure of the board. We just wanted to bring to attention to the board the amount of time that we've missed thus far in terms of instructional time due to the inclement weather. We do have bank time built into our calendar based upon an extended day. We have more time at the high school level than we have at the middle school level, but the elementary school level, but we have not surpassed the amount of bank time that we currently have in our calendar, but we did want to bring that to the board's attention. We had a Code Two on, a Code Two day on January 4th, a Code Five day, a Code Two day on January 5th, a two-hour delay and a two-hour release unfortunately on the 8th, and then a Code Two day today, the 9th. At the elementary level, we have 6.64 days in bank time, and that leaves us 3.03 days of time left. I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. On the back of the calendar, we publish the days that we're going to use for making up time. The next one that would be available would be the Martin Luther King Holiday, and I just, I'm confident the board does not want us to consider doing anything with that, but I did want to bring it to the board's attention as to where we are, and that our intention is to consume, if hopefully not, but consume, you know, we need to additional bank time and then come back to the board with any proposed makeups once we've used up the time that's built into our calendar.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. That brings us to citizen comments. We didn't have anybody sign up. Is there anybody in the office who wishes to speak? I see a speaker from the Rock Hill District coming down, so let me read this little blurb. I know Ms. Brown could probably recite it to us. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation to address the board. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose, topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may utilize the procedures outlined in Policy 1113, Public Complaints. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Dana Brown, 41 St. Williams Way, Rock Hill District. I did, I attended your work session. I sat there in the back row. Really disappointed to hear that you guys didn't talk about the study hall for the catalog for next year. This is something that we really, really need, and I'm not sure that staff or you guys really appreciate how much extra homework the block scheduling has caused our kids. I've talked to a lot of teachers, and they're saying because of the block scheduling, they have to give more homework. I don't understand why that is. They've explained to me that the kids don't have the attention span for a 90-minute block, so they have to give it as a homework. So if you could really help our kids out, I mean, I could parade a bunch of kids up here if that's what it's going to take, but they really need some help. They really need a homework block that they can do, especially the kids in the advanced classes, so please reconsider that. I know Dr. Benson was in a meeting, I was in with him a couple of months ago with some surrounding superintendents from the surrounding counties, and they offer it, and it's very successful in those other counties. It was a governing board meeting. We don't. We're the ones that don't, and we really, really need it. And as I told you in my email, I think it could be very cost neutral. I don't think it's going to cost us anything. There's no textbooks required, anything like that for it, and we can certainly reposition some staff for that, and failing everything else, I mean, we know the master schedule has room in it for FTEs. We could reposition those, but failing that, we've got a gifted teacher sitting in each of the high schools, monitoring a very small population of kids doing virtual Virginia. So, I mean, maybe the study hall can sit in with them, but kids really, really need some help on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. We have deferred the committee reports and board member comments to the meeting on January 23rd. That brings us to the superintendent's comments. I thought he was going to talk about the bank day, so I want to move yours, too.
I was. The only thing I would like to add, as part of that discussion in general, is that there's a lot of consideration that goes into whenever we make a closing, and we have a lot of folks that have an opportunity to provide input into that. We work very closely with folks in local government, emergency management services. We get reports from National Weather Service and Sterling. We have our own staff members that are out checking the roads, and I know that sometimes it's difficult for folks to understand why we might need to be closed. They look outside their window and might see a main stretch of road that looks like it's in very good shape. The case this morning was, we had a lot of secondary roads that still had ice, and temperatures didn't look as though they were going to recover sufficiently in order to melt that ice prior to us having both buses and student drivers on the road, which is also a concern for us. We have an early morning conference call. It generally starts at about 4:45 in the morning, and we have probably a dozen folks on that call representing both local government and schools, Mr. Foley and myself, and there's a lot of thought and conversation that goes into, you know, what are we going to do to ensure that everyone is going to be safe? And we do make sure that when we're looking at that decision, that that is our top priority. But I just, I did want to just share a little bit about how that happens, and that there are a lot of folks that have an opportunity to weigh in on that, and it's not me alone making that call.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. And is there going to be something posted on our website at some point about the process that we use? Because I think that if the community were aware of how complex this is and how many Because I think that if the community were aware of how complex this is and how many moving parts, they would be more understanding.
Ms. Johnson has some.
It's there now?
It's drafted.
Good. All right. That brings us to consent. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda? Remember, this includes now item number 10.02.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to action items. We have one action item, and that is the item that we had in the work session prior to the meeting on, and that is approve the 2018-2019 High School Program of Studies/High School Course Catalog. Do we have a motion?
Yes. Motion to approve 10.01.
Second.
Okay. Motion from Ms. Egan, second by Mr. McCosker. Any discussion?
I would just say, Madam Chair, that's to remind the public that it is, will be up online, and of course, we'll get it out to the folkses, and that's why we're not going to present it here. And it was presented in full in the work session just prior.
Just one other addition. I would just want to say, I just wanted to compliment the work of LOD. This is our first real full year of the program studies like this. I thought it was presented very well, and I just wanted to thank all of those who came tonight to the work session who were involved because this is one of the most important things for our students of what the access is, and so thank you all for your work. I know it's a team effort, but so thank you.
I'll second that.
Dr. Chase, did you have any?
All right. And thank you for making the changes to have more parity among the weighted credits. I think that will be well received by, you know, our students and their families. All right. All in favor of the motion? We already voted. No, we did not vote. All right.
Madam Chair, on information, 10-1, 10-2, 10-3, I would suggest for the Board's consideration that they take 10-1, 10-2, 10-3. We take it home and email any issues on those three policies.
We still need a vote.
Yeah, we're voting on, we're still on 10.01. All in favor of the motion to approve?
Aye.
All opposed?
I'm sorry, I gotta.
All right. Now we're on to information items.
I gotta regenerate.
Starting with 11.01. Approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies assigned to the Office of the Superintendent as delineated in the agenda.
So that was the 11.
Madam Chair, if everyone will refresh your screens because what used to be 1101 through 1106 is now 1001 through 1006.
So I guess I refreshed, and it was 10. I'm reading 1001. Okay. So the new, Madam Chair, the new 1001, 1002, and 1003, as mentioned earlier, is the three policies by the superintendent for changes, and I would suggest in the efforts of time that unless the school board members had any burning issues with these policies that they want to talk about in public, that we take them home and email them out to missy, our comments, and then come back for approval on our next meeting.
Now, these are proposed revisions to policies. I spoke with Mr. Nelson earlier, and I understand that the same is true, and correct me if it's not Ms. Bowright, that these are generally changes to bring us into line with the current law. That every year the law changes, just, and these are basically tweaks to our policies to make sure we're consistent with that. There's no new surprises here that we're trying to do, especially.
Or recommendations from Virginia School Board Association.
Madam Chair? I have a quick question that while I could do it through the clerk, I know that there was some discussion about the grievance procedure that was being asked by others that I would like them to know the answer to or let them know that I'm asking the question tonight and that we'll have an answer for it at the next meeting. And that is where it was redlined about the grievance policy. Yeah. Do you want to say that out loud again? It's 1401. 1401. That talks about not being able to go. To grieve, to grieve an issue above your supervisor. Right. And I just want to know if that's going away, and if you could have the answer for us at the next meeting, I would appreciate that.
If we can respond right quickly, if it's the pleasure of the Board.
Yes. We have a grievance procedure, and it is 4905 and 4906. So that takes care of all of the employee grievances that we may have. To put it in the 1401 would assume that there could be some things that aren't grievable, and so it doesn't really belong in 1401 when it's already a procedure elsewhere for supervisory employees, for classified employees, and for licensed employees.
So we're not taking the grievance procedure away? Okay. We're just moving the policy.
It's in another section where it talks about grievances and it gives a definition of grievance.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So we're in effect cleaning this up.
It is cleaning it up.
Yes.
But grievances are not going away.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right. And Mr. McCosker, if it's our, with you, I would suggest that we send any questions or concerns to Dr. Benson, and then he can farm them out to the staff as appropriate and then share all the issues and answers with the entire Board because, you know, we all might, we all might have an interest. And if we could send them to him, say by close of business next Monday, that would give him enough time to get it back to us, you know, for the meeting. Now, is it the pleasure of the Board that we put this on for approval at the next meeting for action? I think they're fairly standard.
Pending any issues.
All right. So that would be 1001, 1002, and 1003.
I beg your pardon. If you will refresh one more time. Somehow it has.
Why don't I just read, why don't I just read them? Approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies assigned to the Office of Superintendent as delineated in the agenda. Approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as reviewed by the Department of Human Resources. And approve the superintendent's proposed revisions to policies and regulations as reviewed by the Department of Human Resources. Those three items.
1003 is an accidental duplication of 1002, so I have just removed it. So you actually only have two agenda items, one for Dr. Benson's and one for Human Resources.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Okay. We want to, if you have any questions on any of those, send them to Dr. Benson by next Monday, COB. He'll get the answers and share them with everybody.
All right. We have to address.
Is that okay for?
Yes, ma'am.
We got that? This is all information.
1003 we have to address.
Okay. Which one is mine? I just refreshed. Okay. The next one is approve the purchase of servers for 17 elementary schools and the Melcher Complex from Hewitt Packard, Inc. at a cost not to exceed $225,000 from budgeted fiscal year 2018 operating funds. Now, this is on for information. I understand that these servers that we have in our 17 elementary schools in the Melcher Complex are not covered by a warranty. So if the Board is interested in approving this or moving it up to action tonight, we could get this sooner rather than later. I don't think the world is going to fall apart if we wait two weeks, but it might help us save some money on maintenance.
I just have a question or a comment. We're still doing servers? We're not in cloud?
They're virtual machines.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a common term of servers, but they are virtual machines. It's just one virtual machine per school, so.
And we already did comparison analysis in terms of.
A VDA contract, plus on top of the VDA contract, you get big deal pricing, so it's a larger discount.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. It's the pleasure of the Board.
Madam Chair, I would be willing, I would like to make a motion to go ahead and move 10.03 to action this evening.
Second.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor of moving this item to action, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion to approve the purchase of the servers for 17 elementary schools.
Motion from Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. Now, that brings us to approve school capacity standards. If this is an item that, you know, we want to have a significant discussion on, we might want to consider deferring it to the next meeting. If there's, you know, how does the Board feel about that? We don't need a motion now because it's an information item, but if this is something we want to, you know, have a discussion, and only because of the inclement weather that's being predicted, and we have a closed session after this meeting.
Doesn't matter to me. I'm good with defer.
Or if anybody wants to do it this evening?
We've had significant discussion.
Yeah, yeah. If you're ready.
If anyone's, I don't need to defer it, and I don't need to have significant discussion.
Right. Right. I agree with. I do have some questions, but, okay. My question is that at the last joint CIP meeting, we talked about getting information about our comparison districts on how they're handling special ed preschool, and I haven't seen that yet, so I didn't know about that.
Excuse me. If we have answers to the Board, we can hear you, but for the record, it'd probably better if you come up to the microphone and give us the answer because then I think it'll be more audible.
And I have a comment also. I just wanted to know if these were state mandates?
So we have responses from five of our comparison divisions. We're still waiting for four to answer your question, Dr. Chase. And Mrs. Young, your question was state mandates for preschool. The numbers that we look at are the preschool numbers or for the teachers for their caseload numbers. And those numbers are eight students with disabilities. And for our preschool programs, we have that four and four model, so four students with disabilities and four peer models.
And that four and four, that is a state mandate?
The mandate is the eight students with IEPs for the preschool teacher. So in a self-contained class, we could only have eight students. Typically, in our preschool, we have a self-contained autism program and a self-contained program for students with emotional disabilities. So that maximum is eight, and there are no peer models in those classrooms. In our peer models, we have four and four. Four students with disabilities in the morning with four typically developing peers. So eight students in the morning and then eight in the afternoon, and four in the afternoon have disabilities and four are general ed or typically developing peers. So those eight students with disabilities meet the state mandate for caseload. So that is a mandated number on caseload.
Okay.
The peer, we have five different options where we could serve preschool students. So we have the peer model, which is what we use now, and it's required that we have a 50% ratio of students with disabilities and students that are typically developing peers. We have the self-contained model where there would be a total of eight. We have a model that we don't have in our division where we would have to have preschool programs in all of our elementary schools, and then our students with disabilities would access every preschool program in 17 elementaries. Someone had asked at that joint meeting about contracting out. We've looked into that, and we've talked to our comparison divisions to see what others have done. Divisions who are north have purchased slots in private daycares, but what they find out is once we, once they have sent their teachers in to work in those private daycares, they fall under the guidance of what is permitted in the daycare. So it really becomes more of a daycare setting versus an educational setting for early childhood intervention. I said there's five. And the fifth one is the home environment. If we sent, thank you, Carrie. We were talking about this earlier today. If we sent our staff into the home or into daycare centers, which we had talked about before, we would be sending our number of preschool teachers into multiple different environments. So to cover that would be quite difficult.
So do we want to wait to get all nine comparison districts and what they're doing? Or?
My hope was to have all nine to you in a chart for our school board weekly updates by the end of the week.
That'd be great.
Dr. Chase, there's also a list of other questions that were brought up during that forum, and so we're collating and collecting all that data, and we plan to share it through that forum, the joint CIP forum, so both Boards will get those answers.
Great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Benson, is there an urgency to go forward with this item on the next agenda? Or, you know, I'm asking because, you know, it sounds like we're going to have some, you know, information provided to us, that there may be some additional questions. You know, is there a need to get this approved sooner?
I think it would be okay for us to defer if there are additional questions that come up, and we'll push it.
All right. So perhaps we could put it on for action, and then if we need additional time, we can, you know, defer to the next meeting if that's all right with the Board. And we should have that information on the comparison groups by the end of the week. Mr. McCosker?
Yeah. And I just have, I think, I'm good with the criteria of the previously briefed slides on that. It's just that I'm not good with the chicklet chart that shows the capacity for school per se. So I approve the process. I just don't approve the chicklet chart right now, so I just want to make sure that we wouldn't be approving the numbers, would we?
Well, what this particular agenda is requesting, that we approve the process of how we develop program capacity as the number we use when we're evaluating capacity for the elementary school level. The numbers are this year's numbers. If any Board member has exception with that particular number, feel free to start to dialogue with me and staff. We can address that, try to answer your questions, and we can do that. But I don't think the information that we are gathering for the joint CIP really has a tremendous, it has some bearing, but a tremendous amount of bearing on what we're asking for the agenda to be approved. And we, staff felt that since there were some questions during the joint CIP process whether the school board had bought into these, this process and the program capacities, that we felt we needed to get it to the school board to get that approved.
Ms. Hazard, did you?
Just my only comment is, I know this is taking us a while, but just our view of how we look at program capacity is, I think, very critical going forward as we get into the CIP process determining how many schools, how much space we need to find. So I think this is a more realistic idea of our challenges that we learned last year in our sort of redistricting and other areas. So I think whether, I think looking at things in a new way and being more accurate is something we need to be looking at because it doesn't just impact us, it also impacts proffers and other things. I got a call today from, and I'm like, you know, we are full. And so this does have a broad, broad impact on certainly us and our CIP needs, but it has even a broader impact, too, with the county as they have to assess proffers. So just something for us to remember.
Any other comments, questions? Mr. Haran, I would like to make sure that when we have, show these capacities, I never thought of it as a chicklet chart, but on the chart, that it's clear that this is as of the year that we are in.
Yes, ma'am.
Because this is always subject to change. We're constantly moving these programs around depending on where the student, you know, enrollment has made a change. So I wouldn't want, you know, someone to look at that and say, oh, this school has this capacity, and that's going to be it, you know, forevermore.
And how often do we do this?
We do this annually as part of our, well, I'm sorry. We do the capacity, we will do the elementary school capacities annually if the Board approves using the program capacity. Because we'll look at it from an annual. Well, we do the forecast enrollment annually, too. So please don't, one is a subset of the other. We use the capacities to analyze what our student enrollment is and gives us a resultant of forecasting the capacity at the schools in the future based on the enrollment forecast and our known capacity for that particular year. As Mrs. Healy mentioned just now, we're going to be looking at the elementary school capacity on an annual basis. The middle and high school use the design capacity, which is static unless we physically make alterations to the space for something, renovation or a program change, a significant program change. So we do it on an annual basis.
Right. And the state measures twice. The state measures at the end of September and then again at the end of March. Is it March?
They do ADM. We do a forecast, ADM forecast.
It doesn't hurt to look at more often.
And then one in March.
Took us how many years to get to look at it once a year?
Yes, ma'am.
Making progress.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to, is this 10.06 or 10.5? My numbers are off. 10.05. All right. Approve a resolution requesting appropriation by the Stafford County Board of Supervisors of the FY17 carryforward funds, $2,113,597 and $176,403 from the Schools Capital Projects Reserve into the FY18 Schools Capital Projects Budget Fund to be used for the replacement of Hartwood Elementary School wastewater treatment facility and upgrade slash replacements of the SCPS transportation radio system and radios. This is on for information. Are there any questions about this item?
About time.
That a question?
Go ahead. You can go ahead. You started.
Well, I'll start it then. I would like to certainly urge my fellow Board members to support this project, especially the Hartwood Elementary, like, school septic system. When I went back and looked, this project wasn't identified as an urgent project last year when the Board was trying to fund as many of our infrastructure projects with cash. At the time, the generator at Hartwood Elementary was identified as the pressing issue. So certainly over time and maybe based on our water testing, this became a priority issue, as you all know, or you will continue to know, is our only school that is not on public water. So I just would like to make a pitch that we've really, it became, it appears it became an urgent item based on last year because I went and looked on the list of the $6 million, and it wasn't even on there. So this has moved to a critical issue.
No, and I, no, I do appreciate that, but I looked at the list, too, from, I think it was our May meeting, and it was not on the list, although I think the design, the design was, Scott, Mr. Haran, the design was on the list, so that at least indicated something. But I guess, I guess my issue is the way it was, it reads here, I'm a little confused because it was like, we're, like Ferry Farm, we're looking at a rebuild in 10 years, nine years, eight years for Hartwood, and here in the agenda item, it says it may break one of these years, kind of thing.
Well, it's, I will tell you.
Before spending $650,000, I just want to make sure.
Yes, sir. First and foremost, the wastewater treatment plant was identified several years ago in need of replacement. We just weren't prepared to bring it last year. It needed to be designed, and so that's, we weren't ready for it. So therefore, that's why it was not on the FY17 list. It was certainly a requirement. We just weren't ready and prepared to follow through on the study. Now, as far as it needing, the life, the study that we had done, the evaluation identified that it needed to be replaced, and it needed to be replaced in the next several years. Can we get another year out of it? We could roll the dice and do that, but if we don't need to, staff and the committee that evaluated all the infrastructure projects that were identified for FY18 identified this as very high in priority for need. So therefore, that's where it is. So, therefore, that's where it is. So, it's based on age, it's based on its condition, its current condition, and its ability to treat the sewage. And it's, if you know anything about sewage treatment plants, as it gets older, that ability decreases, and it is harder and harder to treat the same amount of effluent. And so, so therefore, we've identified, even though we know that in the future, and we don't know when in the future, it could be eight, nine, 10, 12, 15 years, that we have to, that we're considering doing something with Hartwood Elementary School. It's those decisions, very similar to the decision we made six, seven years ago to replace the roof at Ferry Farm. We knew we were going to try, but we didn't know when that. There was no certainty in the future for that project, but we knew it was, it was out there on the horizon. So, the board made a decision to go ahead and fund it, and so, we've gotten a great roof for the last seven or eight years, and it will be for, you know, it's a 20-year roof. So, it's some of those decisions. So, I think the treatment plant has, definitely has a life of 10 years to 15 years. So, who knows how long we will be at Hartwood, but we do know it's, the likelihood is that we're going to be there another 10 years.
Any other comments, Ms. Young?
Yeah, I have some questions or comments, really. In reading it, it says here, given a recent study identified a need to replace the current wastewater treatment facility due to its condition, the probability of operational failure in the next several years and the facility having reached its current operational life. So, next several years in probability. I would like to have some more information on this. I would also like to know the other projects that were not approved last year and were also not funded. And do we have any identified projects right now since the beginning of the new school year? I would like to know what we're doing about, for example, the lead in our school system that's across the board, not only in Stafford, but other schools. I don't know what the status is on that. But, yeah, should the lead problem be considered also as something that we should look at?
Well, certainly, we're addressing the lead issues right now. So, we are in a continuous effort to test all of our 30 schools in four sites. So, we started with our older schools, and so, as we identify faucets and water fountains that have lead, we have remediation. So, nothing's holding that up. So, that's progressing as we identify those things and test those schools. We can't just test them all at one time. We're doing it in progressive, and I'll provide, a plan to provide the school board an update of where we are in the, in the second kind of big round of testing of schools. So, we have that. Exactly what more information can I provide you on the wastewater treatment plant? I'll be happy. You can call me. We can talk about it if there's more detail you'd like. And we do have a list. We have a list of over $8 million in projects in FY18 slash 19 projects that were evaluated by staff, of which none of those projects are included in the FY18 budget. There's no fun, there was no funding provided in the FY18 budget. So, there's 18, $8 million plus or minus worth of projects, and we have that. And I think I can certainly make that available to the board.
Sure. That would be nice.
I'll do it in the school board update, and you can see the stats of that.
Yes, definitely. That would be nice.
And those projects will be the foundation of the projects that Dr. Benson is considering, including some in the FY19 budget.
Yeah. And I believe that the last meeting, you did mention something about looking across the board at everything that needs to be taken care of in buildings.
We certainly have more requirements than we have resources to address.
Yeah, I understand. You mentioned it, so I was just.
Yes, ma'am. So, if there's, please let me know if there's any, any additional information on the wastewater